I'm Mayor Kevin Schilling and calling the regular meeting of the Burian City Council to order on September 22, 2025. The time is 5:30 PM. This hybrid meeting is being conducted in person at Burian City Hall and virtually via Zoom webinar. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I will read the Native Land and Peoples acknowledgment. We begin by honoring and acknowledging that this meeting is taking place in the ancestral lands and waters of the coast Salish Tribals peoples who have since time immemorial protected and been in relationship with the Salish Sea and these precious lands we know as Burian and our home. As a government agency that is occupying indigenous lands, it is important that we remember the history of our area and to work towards fixing the injustices that persist. We acknowledge our region's tribal citizens, their descendants and their ancestors, and we honor their invaluable contributions to this region's community's identity, economy, history, culture, and future. The clerk will now take the roll.
The city of Burian offers Spanish interpretation via Zoom. For those attending on Zoom, please select the language you would like to listen to this meeting in, either English or Spanish. The next slide shows how to select a language on your mobile app. With that, we'll go into roll call. Mayor Kevin Schilling.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarah Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Hugo Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Linda Akey.
Here.
Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Alexandrade.
Present.
Councilmember Stephanie Mora.
Present.
Mayor Aller present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to confirm the agenda?
I move that we confirm the agenda.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, seconded by Councilmember Mata. All those in favor to confirm the agenda, say aye. Unanimous confirmation of the agenda. All right, well, moving right along to our first presentation of the night from the Port of Seattle. Marco and Mark and Casey with the city of Burian. Hello. Port of Seattle Flight Corridor Safety Program Presentation.
Hello. Okay.
I can get moved. There we go.
I'm Casey Stanley. I'm the city of Burian Parks and Cultural Services Director, and I'm here tonight to introduce Mark and Marco from the Port of Seattle to talk about the Flight Corridor Management Program.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Schilling, council members, city manager, Baylon. My name is Mark Lutwiler. I work for the Port of Seattle at the airport. I'm the Assistant Director of Airport Operations. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk about a very important topic about safety in the flight corridor that affects and surrounds our local areas. Think about the next. I don't think which way. There we go. So our Flight Corridor Management Program is this is required and ongoing safety across airports. That's not just Seattle, but it's something that is for all airports out there, for large airports, commercial service airports, and this is to help identify and manage obstructions that may be in the flight path to aircraft. It's really important for the safety of individuals in the aircraft and also on the ground that aircraft have a safe path to come in to the approach and land at our airport here at Seattle and across the other airports. So this is a federally mandated program that all airports have to prescribe to. I know there's a lot of language in here for regulatory, but I want to focus on a few items over here. Is that we have federal, state, and local laws that regards obstructions around airspace, and obstructions could be a structure. In this case, we're tonight, we're going to talk about trees, but those are things that may penetrate up into the surfaces of the airport to protect aircraft and airspace for that. These are very consistent with federal land use guidance and also within the city of Burian code that keeps the airspace safe for both, like I said earlier, on the ground and in the air for that. This is really focuses on the height limits that portraying to structures, structures, including trees for that. And then you see in here, we also quote the Burian requirement under for height limits airport that we should now lot shall not allow trees to grow to a certain excess height. I had it good earlier here.
You got it.
Oh, we got it. All right, so every five years, the port conducts a comprehensive study. The last one was done in 2019 where we actually use a lot of, you know, ground surveys, aerial surveys to be able to look at obstacles that could penetrate into that may affect these surface restrictions that we have out here. And it's one of those things that we're looking for is that our goal is not, we're trying to be proactive about it. We're not trying to look at, yes, we are looking at obstacles, in this case, trees that are in that flight path, but also ones we're looking at that may grow into that flight path. So it's a very proactive program we do for every five years. So we're forecasting for five years out in the future. What may penetrate this so we can take proper mitigations early on so they don't become a hazard later on. And I apologize about the granularity of this map a little bit, but this kind of shows a little bit of this map where kind of where we're going to talk about is Matheson Park and how it's approached what we call the west end of the runway, the newest runway built at C-TAC. Is that if you're out there in the park area, is you think that the flight path is very linear, like straight across for that. But the way these surfaces work out, you need to be able to look at in an angle of protection for that. There's specific slope requirements so that that way for weather, aircraft, emergency situations, whatever, they have a clear path, not just straight down the runway, but off to left and right to be able to maneuver for their safety. And I said, this is a requirement for that. But you can see where Matheson's Park falls into this little boundary of this kind of like, you know, imaginary surface out there. So we tried to transpose them on a map the best we could. We have a better map coming. So this is a little bit more technical. The information I want everyone to be able to focus here on the right. I apologize. It's not, I got the big map here behind me for that. But this area shows the trees and there's some specific trees out there. And it shows a little bit of these imaginary surfaces on the heights for those and where these trees are projected to grow into for that. We talked about the sites, the surveys, and we call mean sea level. It's an average height. Not above the ground, but in a specific height that's measured for that. And we've identified five trees in this area, which we'll talk about here on the next slide, that could penetrate these surfaces. There we go. Here's a little different map where we talked about. So we have five trees that are in Matheson Park. Will they'll be able to, that are going to penetrate these surfaces, we feel in the next five years based on our consultant studies and for this report. There's a six tree in there that we worked with the city of Burian staff and their forester to be able to remove. The trees are clustered together and it's just, if we're going to remove the surrounding trees, it's safer just to be able to remove that sixth tree. So something we've been proactively working on since this early spring. And we're talking about, you know, removal. I know, you know, trees are a very sensitive issue. You know, and how do we go and remove those? What are their options to remove them? And that's something that we want to talk a little bit about. There's kind of three, you know, we're trying to follow best practices. And these are established best practices that the Port of Seattle have utilized, and we also have to work within the local city ordinances, counties and states, individual regulations. But our best practice is to fully remove the tree. And the reason we don't that is like, we talk about topping the trees. As be able to just kind of like say, cut the trees, you know. Why don't you just cut down, you know, a certain level of the tree for that? It also, you know, the trees actually wind up dying to some extent. They get decay, they become safety hazards where then they become potentially unsafe for that. Where they can crown the trees, which is kind of, you know, a different version of topping, but then that just prevents more growth for the tree. It doesn't reduce the tree's height. It actually will, you know, allows a tree to be able to grow up. Another option is to put lights on the tree. And by putting a light in the tree, there's, there's an expense by lighting the tree for that. But there's also, it doesn't reduce the tree from growing. It also doesn't reduce the tree as being an obstacle in the future for that. So, you know, we have a very, you know, credit-based tree replacement policy that that we do. And what we do is that we actually, you know, we try to sit and figure out how are we going to, you know, replant these trees. So we've worked with a lot of following the city codes with the city of Burian. And let's see here. And we're required to do a three-to-one replacement. And so for every tree we remove, in this case, there'd be six trees in Matheson Park, we would replant 18 trees. And in doing that, we've worked with the city of Burian staff, and that nine of these trees would actually be replanted inside the park itself. And then another nine trees were replanted in another area in Burian to be deterred as working collaboratively with the city parks department and their forester about where to plant the other additional nine trees. And as part of the Port of Seattle, as we remove the trees, we got to safely remove them and also replant them. But we're also required to monitor the trees for their health, make sure they're being planted properly and they continue to grow for the two years after replanning for the process. There's a little bit of the schedule that we've, we put together for these things. So the port, we have this flight management corridor program, and this is, this is part of it where we're looking at the flight corridor of the aircraft for different aspects of everything. And as part of that, we have to submit it for the State Environmental Policy Act. We need to be able to submit our program and results for that, submit it to SEPA as noted in here. So there were some pro organic SEPA public comments period that ended on September 11. Moving forward, we hope that we can do a design for work by October 6 to complete the design work of what we need to do for tree mitigation. These are all just suggestions and has to be approved by the Port of Seattle Commission. So we have to go to commission for consideration about our Flight Corridor Management Program and effects it has on trees and the flight surfaces. And the earliest we looked like we're forecasting would be that we would, it would probably be in the second quarter of next year before any tree removal process occurred. So it's a little bit of time before that. It I guess for, for public communication is that one of the things before we get into any tree removal, which would be the second quarter of 2026, we would actually, you know, proactively work with our communications team and city of Burian's team about being able to put out public information about the tree removal process so we can collaboratively work on the messaging together. So be able to put this out in advance to be able to message the community, the removal of these trees. And and with that, I would open up to any questions from, from our colleagues at Gert Fund?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Mata?
Marco, good seeing you. I haven't seen you in a while there, Marco, so appreciate you coming to the meeting. I think one of my questions was going to be topping the trees. And obviously, not only does it affect the tree, but also I guess it's a different species of, of, of birds that start building nests that could create a potential problem for the planes. Now, I do like the fact that we're going to get more trees. Obviously, it's painful to see trees that have been around for a long time to be cut down, especially when we've made that as part of the goal of the city to have more tree canopy. But I do appreciate some of the programs and some of the funding that the port, as an airport city, has the effort of making sure that we're getting more than, what it was at 36 or 32 trees. I think you will have helped fund some of the tree goals in the city. And I would say that in your next budget, it'd be great to see more trees being able to be given to our community members and more trees in our city because it's been a major goal of ours, not only to be a walkable city, a pleasant city, but also being able to take care of an environment. And being close to an airport is difficult as a city, you know. I mean, this has been a long conversation for the last eight years that I've been on the council on the noise mitigation and, you know, some of the safety concerns, and those are all fair concerns. So thing for me is if there was any way to save the trees and just looking at your presentation and reading over, you know, trees and the importance of trees, one and figuring out, okay, well, we also have to have the ability to make sure that our residents and that are flying out and flying back in that are safe when they're coming in. So I didn't really have any questions other than I appreciate the presentation today. Thank you.
No, thank you. And so where were you planting 18 trees in the city of Burian?
Well, there you go. I give you a better number.
I know. Yeah. Thank you.
And if I could add as well, Marco Melanese is the Community Engagement Manager at the airport. We've also pledged to maintain the trees that are planted in Matheson Park for two years as well to make sure they survive.
Well, it's good to see, I think it's one year that you're on the hook for, but you're giving them extra years. Thank you.
I'll go ahead. Deputy Mayor Moore?
Thank you, and I really appreciate your showing up and answering some of the questions that had been pre-asked so that those were going to be my questions, and I had to come up with a whole new batch of questions. So I appreciate that. I do, I was able to come up with more questions, but I thought that we got off to a good start there. The, I guess the first question is I know the parks have been working with Burian since February and that it went through a SEPA checklist and determined no value of the trees. And I, I want to ask how the, how the designation of no value or, or that there was no special value to those trees. When I look at trees and parks, I see two kinds of value. One is the, well, three, one is the value that any tree has just in terms of, you know, taking, taking carbon dioxide, making oxygen, drinking up stormwater runoff and so forth. The next is the value to a neighborhood where there are so many competing uses of land in a park as a place where we can establish a baseline of trees that people in the community can continue to visit as change happens in other areas. But the third, if you visit Matheson Park, it's just like anyone who's ever worn short pants on a slide knows this, is the cooling process from the shade in the park is something that isn't going to be replaced by 18 little trees for decades. So I guess my first question is, you know, did, was, was the value of the trees as, as part of that park as an integral, actually part of the park that has a function in, in the play area, was that taken into account?
Neither Mark or I are part of the environmental staff at the airport, but I'm going to make a guess here and estimate and wondering if the value estimation of no value might have to do with the timber cost of the wood and wondering that that was the factor that made that decision. Not, I mean, the port agrees with you in terms of the value it brings for the park in terms of shade and, and just kind of the natural beauty. But I'm, I'm wondering if that might be related again to the timber value of the trees.
Is that something we can have follow-up? Can I ask one more question before? How many more questions can I have?
Let's do one more and then we'll go to next one.
Okay, the, the next question I had just had to do with the, the turning at the, the, the flight corridor and the planes turning. What are the problems that you're anticipating the trees causing with that? And, and I heard about kind of the, you know, the specific height being important and the elevation being important. I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing is sitting here five years from now, having the same conversation again about five more trees. So is this something that all of Matheson Park is slowly going to grow up and get cut down when, you know, on its 100th birthday? Or is there, are these the five trees that, that are the problem trees?
No, great questions for that as, you know, Matheson Park has a lot of trees in it. And we do this program every five years, and so we're not trying to look at beyond five years from now. So we're really just focused on these trees for this five-year study for that. But to get back to your, to your original aspect of is that aircraft, you know, at a normal, and and as a, you know, on a recreational basis, I've, I've been a recreational pilot for over three decades. And, and I do really value the cities and the ordinances that do protect aircraft and trees and surfaces for that because it's a critical part of aircraft. And, and under normal operations, aircraft, you know, have a certain flight path, but it's when, at times when there's, you know, severe weather or emergencies for that, where the aircraft is not in its best performance, although those are very rare, those are things that were required with the FAA to have these surfaces built out from our airport. And Matheson Park, although it doesn't look that far from a standpoint, it's really only about three quarters of mile direct line of sight from the end of the runway for the closest runway at the airport. So it is in close proximity, even though it's, it's off to the west a little bit. And, and so these are established procedures we have through the FAA to be able to, under various, you know, conditions, you know, it could be weather, emergencies, whatever, for aircraft performance to be able to have the most safest path for that aircraft to be able to not obstruct an obstacle for that and in there. So it's, it is, and it's a proactive measure and it's, and it's for the overall safety of those involved. I don't know if I was able to answer all your questions.
Councilor Garcia?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I've got a two, potentially a three-part question, but one, and it's related to costs. Could you share with us the cost of each option that was looked at, the removal, the cost to top it, the cost to crown it, the cost to light it? The trees are our biggest asset. It really is our most indistinguishable asset that the city maintains. So we're very, we, we are very proactive about protecting a tree canopy. And though the material cost of, of the wood might not be too much according to potential consultant, I can't agree more with counsel, with Deputy Mayor Sarah Moore in that these trees do provide a lot of shade and protection, especially for the flight path communities that bear the brunt of the pollution from their, the port. So I wanted to get the cost of that. And one of the other things that I wasn't sure about is there's a two-year maintenance plan on maintaining the new trees. Who's paying for that and who's maintaining the trees? Is that us or is that you guys?
I'll answer the last one first. Yes, for the, the trees that are planted in Matheson Park, the port is covering the costs for maintaining those trees and making sure they survive. In terms of the, the cost of the other options, crowning or, or topping, it was determined pretty early in the program, this is the second phase of that program, that that wasn't the correct way to go in terms of both safety and for the health of the tree. So I'm not sure if we actually ever costed out those options, but it's something I can look into if you want.
And then the part of the maintenance is, is you paying for the maintenance, but is that you also, your staff maintaining it? Or is that paying our staff to maintain the tree?
I believe the, the preference from the city was to have us do it. And then for the other nine trees that would be planted somewhere else, there would be cost, we would cover the cost to Burian for actually maintaining those trees wherever they decide to plant.
Thank you. I did want to ask that because our staffing parks is, they're in that, I just want to, don't want to overburden them, especially when it's something that we're doing. Or the, or one thing I wanted to share with the public is you have one day left to apply for the King County Conservation Free Tree Giveaway here in the city of Burian. You can get a tree, a beautiful tree. There's many options, many sizes, many types today. Um, many sizes, many types. Today is your last day to get a free tree. Any resident in the city of Burin can apply for that. If you go into my council member Facebook page, you can see the link for that. You have until tomorrow, I think five P M. Thank you.
Councilor Aki.
Hi, thank you very much for being here to make this presentation. We had quite a few, um, comments on this. And so, uh, really glad that you were here to address that. Um, I, yeah. My questions are what kinds of trees will replace the trees? And how big will the initial trees be? Um, and do you know what, like, the growth rate of the particular trees that you'll be planting will be, um, to be able to, I don't know, provide shade as soon as possible and provide the kinds of needs that you're actually going to be replacing. We really are uninterested in the wood cost of a tree. We're actually interested in how the tree impacts the park and the, the, um, the environmental impacts of a tree. Um, so I'm just kind of curious what those trees will be, how long they will take to grow and what we can expect in the future for that. Uh, I did like, uh, Councilmember Moore's, um, comments too about, you know, the, um, how important these trees are within the community and what they provide, um, to the park. So I just want to reiterate that this is a big concern for our residents and for us here on city council as well.
I can answer that. I might have Josh jump in at once and tell the growth of the trees because I won't know that. Um, but we have identified seven trees, so we do a shore pine, we do three of those, a lace bark elm, two, a white oak, two, a, a hackberry, one, and a black, how do you say that?
Black tupelo.
Tupelo, um, one. And they'd be six feet tall, two inches in diameter.
Caliber.
Caliber, two inches in caliber. No, yeah.
Yeah, big caliber.
And you want to talk about how they grow?
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh, for coming up here randomly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here for another presentation, but, um, been collaborating with parks and the port on this as well. And so we selected the trees, myself, Daniel and Lisa, so the deputy director of the parks and the parks maintenance supervisor. Um, for a variety of different things, ones that grow well in our climate, um, ones that will shade the playground. Uh, we cited them out of the way of like maintenance concerns. So some are getting removed very close to where our trucks drive. So we're not going to put them right back there. We're going to put them closer to the playground. Um, so yeah, we have some evergreens, some deciduous trees. We can't plant anything that's going to get too tall. That's part of the agreement is that it won't, um, you know, grow into it. Uh, over time, you know, if we do need to remove more trees, we're going to select other trees that hopefully fit well into this. And so as these trees grow and other trees need to come down, hopefully it'll be kind of a successional planting. This certainly won't remove all of the shade for the playground. Um, but yeah, we try to do a diversity of different trees that are well suited to the site.
It's too bad we have to remove the trees at all, but thank you very much.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Moore, let's go with two more questions if you can fit within two more questions.
Just my unlimited scroll of questions that I have here. Um, yeah, so, so I guess the next question is, um, what is the argument against doing a full environmental impact study on the trees?
The, um, so this, uh, they've gotten the comments and they've gotten the feedback from the public and so they are now in the process of determining what that final determination might look like. So I, I don't want to presuppose anything. So that's, that's, that's ongoing.
Okay, and then, um, at, when I went to visit the park, I saw eight numbers on trees. Um, was that, was that just to distinguish all of the trees or what, what was? Because I was like, oh, that's, I thought they had said five.
I, I can verify it's, that it's five and wondering if maybe you guys know a little bit more about why there were eight tags.
Um, yeah, so when they first came in, uh, they came in and tagged the trees that they thought could be an issue. And then they did another analysis on those trees and determined which trees were at that height that could reach that height and cause a, um, issue. And so there was five trees out of those eight trees that were identified.
Thank you, and I, um, I, I just wanted to wrap up by saying that normally we, um, have most of our meeting after public comment and today you were kind of the first, the first on the lineup, but, um, if you would be welcome to stay for public comment. Um, I think that I tried to condense some of the comments people have shared with me, but that there may be more.
Well, we'll certainly stay.
Mayor. Thank you. Uh, and I guess this question is more for Josh, since you're here, man. Uh, I want to take your expertise. Is two years maintenance when it's first planted, is that sufficient for trees or is there a established best practice that, um, could better improve the chances of more certainty that these trees will be survival and do what they're supposed to do?
Yeah, that's a good question. Two years is what's listed in our municipal code. Um, so that's kind of what we have as a standard. It used to be the best practice as we get kind of hotter, drier summers with climate change. It's becoming more typical to extend that a little bit. In our private property tree code, we have three years as the establishment period. Um, but, but two years often is good enough. It sort of depends on the situation, but it, it tends to be a little bit longer.
Thank you very much for that. I would advocate to make sure that we, um, look at three to four years in that case, especially since these trees are public and.
Okay. Um, I would just say, I guess for council, if there's further questions to go ahead and email you, Marco, would that work if folks, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming down and giving us that information. We appreciate it. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, and we're just going to have one proclamation tonight. Uh, there's been a request for the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation to be said at our first meeting in October. Uh, so there's a little more time to get organizations and folks here for that. So we're going to have our, uh, Suicide Prevention Month proclamation be read by Councilmember Andrade.
Thank you. Whereas suicide is the twelfth leading cause of death in the United States and it is estimated that one person dies by suicide every eleven minutes. And whereas one in five Washington tenth graders considered suicide in two thousand twenty-one and serious thoughts of suicide are disproportionately experienced by LGBTQ youth, high school students and people of color. And whereas suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the current coping abilities of someone living with mental health condition. And whereas many people who died by suicide did not receive effective behavioral health services due to barriers to accessing services by healthcare providers trained in best practices to reduce suicide risk, prejudices and discrimination surrounding the use, uh, the use of behavioral health treatment and the stigma of discussing suicide with a loved one. And whereas those struggling or in crisis can call or text the number nine eight eight twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to reach the nine eight eight suicide and crisis lifeline or chat online anytime at nine eight eight lifeline dot org. And whereas the National Alliance on Mental Health, Mental Illness recognizes its two thousand twenty-five awareness theme as Start a Conversation, Be the Difference. And whereas September is Suicide Prevention Month and it provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out to those in crisis because even one conversation can change a life. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Burin, Washington does hereby ask all Burin community members to join together to proclaim September two thousand twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Burin and urges all community members to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness. Dated this twenty-second day of September, two thousand twenty-five. While I did not, I did reach out to a couple of different parties to come and accept the proclamation. Uh, neither one of them could join us here tonight, but it, I just want to make sure that I make it be known that this, the fact that we do this, it really stands in our community that we have to make awareness be, uh, it has to be out there. Um, the number again is nine eight eight and you can text or call the number if you or a family member are struggling with this. So um, please make note of that and, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our second, uh, presentation tonight, the Sustainable Forestry Initiative Urban Tree, Urban Tree Cover Benchmarking. Uh, Josh Pedder and Mike Martini, uh, Director of the Urban and Community Forestry and our Urban Forest Planner. Is Mike online? Yes, you are, Mike.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, Mike's online. I'm Josh Pedder. I'm the Urban Forest Planner for the city of Burin. Um, I guess I can do the slide thing here. Um, oh, too much. Uh, so yeah, I'm here tonight to talk about some urban forestry planning that we've been doing with the Green Burin Partnership. Um, as Hugo mentioned, the last day to sign up for our tree giveaway is tomorrow at six P M. Um, King Conservation District is funding this. You can get up to two free trees. Um, you've got, uh, pick them up at Green Burin Day on October eighteenth and you can just Google, uh, Burin Tree Giveaway if you're interested and it should pop right up. Okay, and so our last major urban forestry planning initiative was in twenty eighteen and that was actually funded by the Port of Seattle. And we got the Green Burin Partnership Urban Forest Stewardship Plan as a result of that planning initiative, which is pictured up here. One of the main goals or initiatives that came out of that or was in the plan is setting the goal of forty percent canopy cover by twenty thirty-eight. Uh, that's the map that you see up here with the dark green being the tree canopy cover. Um, we recently got a grant from the Sustainable Forestry Initiative and that is going to help us benchmark our urban forestry program against their standard. While it's not really a revision of this plan, it does give us an opportunity to check in on where we're at and kind of where we may want to go. And I will pass it over to Mike from S F I to talk a little bit more about the grant and the standard.
Thanks, Josh. I appreciate the time to speak tonight. Uh, so I'm Mike Martini, the Director of Urban Community Forestry here at Sustainable Forestry Initiative. I'm a certified arborist, certified urban professor, professional and, uh, I have a couple of different licensed tree experts in different states. And in my role at S F I, I help communities and oversee our grants program in the U S with the, uh, grant program that we have um, through the USDA Urban and Community Forestry Program. Next slide. So a little bit about S F I, we are a international nonprofit that believes through sustainable management of forests that we can collaboratively have forest-focused collaboration and sustain our forestry in all aspects. We're a little bit more known for all of our standards in forest management for lumber and chain of custody of, uh, wood products, paper products and approvals of that. Next slide. About four years ago, we expanded into the urban and community forestry realm. So in partnership with a lot of well-known urban forestry partners that you see at the bottom of the slide here, S F I through with, uh, the leadership of Paul Johnson created this standard to help understand what sustainably urban forest would look like. So this was done with a task force group of twenty-two members, which was professionals in the field, which included organizations and cities and municipalities to help build this comprehensive report. And the grant that you will be receiving from us and have been working on is to do a, a benchmark against this and to understand how you internally evaluate to assist the sustainable program. So the nice thing about this standard is it's an internal snapshot. It is not comparing you to another organization, but what you're doing right now in, as a snapshot in time and where you can progressively go. The grant is to give you the ability, um, to hire a contractor, which Josh is working with Diamond Head Consulting, to start getting reporting ideas, do some engagement internally with staff and externally to get the idea of how you would like to proceed forward with sustainably managing your urban forest and finding maybe those potential gaps and errors that you've seen in your urban forest. You can build capacity into the future. So it's a revisit of that plan and to evaluate where you are now so that way you can make future plans into the, into the future. Next slide. So it's going to help you get what you, what is your priority. So how this will work, next slide, is that there are sixteen different objectives in this standard. Each one has a subcategory called indicators. So in total, there'll be a hundred and nine different indicators that you will be benchmarking against and understanding where you meet. So these indicators are around different aspects as you outlined in these objectives, which range from community engagement, the natural world of ecology, to your brother, red and brother urban forestry program, to recognizing indigenous relations and people of that or, uh, um, orientation. So we really want to make sure that this is comprehensive and you understand what a full, robust program looks like. So these different indicators will be met. And how this works, it works is that through the certification process that S F I has created and how you use this is that it has to be relevant to what your city is currently doing. So this was built to be a robust program for different sized organizations from a New York City, then to the city of Burin, down to, um, a homeowners association. It was written in the mind that this is a flexible uh, standard. So you just show evidence that you've made efforts and have met that indicator in the subjective. It is not a prescriptive way of doing things. It's a descriptive way. It outlines an idea and a concept that what you should be doing for sustainable forestry. And then you have to gather the evidence to show that you are meeting that particular indicator and how you're doing so. Because we know urban forests all over the world may be managed similarly to best management practices, but the practices of doing it has to be flexible because each region faces their own natural disasters. Each one has their own species that they have to deal with. So this is a flexible standard to understand where an organization is. Next slide. And through this process as well, uh, there are funds to do a preliminary idea if you could get certified. So part of the grant is to hire an audit, um, a certification body, which I'll explain on the next slide, that will come out and do a, a desk audit. They review the documentation that Diamond Head Consulting is putting together on the city and give you an idea if you could certify your urban forest. And with S F I, we have a couple of different ways of doing this. There is the full standard, which is all a hundred and nine indicators. But we've created some themes. These themes are ways to lump the work you're doing into ideas to fixate on a smaller step forward. Because a lot of organizations have worked with Tree City U S A, Trees of the World, which are four to five different, um, requirements versus a full hundred and nine. So our themes are, range from a thirty to forty-eight indicators. So that's a small stepping stone to understand where you're at. And our urban forest improvement one is primarily what an urban forest program is robustly doing once they have an established program. Next slide. And certification provides a lot of credibility. So it's not just S F I, it's not just you saying you're doing this. It is an auditor that comes out and credit and gives you that notability of saying you have done this. You've, they're very black and white. You've met it or you've not. So they're giving that credibility that the city is doing this and that you've met the requirements to become a sustainable urban forest. It's an investment. So if you, when you're writing grant opportunities and other urban forestry programs, if you're certified, you can indicate that you are doing a hundred and nine different things each year to keep your urban forest up and running. It makes you more desirable in donors' eyes. So they see that you've already put in the effort and that you're looking to keep building it forward. It's also continual improvement with the certification process. It doesn't stop it at one and done. It's continually doing checkups. So the certification process, if you decide to enter that, is a five-year commitment. And each year there are surveillance audits that come with this. And again, this is not part of the grant itself. This is the next step after the grant. The grant is just paying for the idea of benchmarking against it, seeing where you're at and doing a preliminary desk audit to see if you can move into the certification process. And of course, this will show collaborative leadership because in this process for this, it, it's not all on just Josh to make sure he's doing the hundred and ninety. He's going to have to talk to the different departments, the parks, the port authority, what is happening, how are the trees being managed? It starts to break down a lot more of the silos to understand how the urban forest management is across different departments, across different people's management levels. So that way we can, so you can start to build a profile to see where do the needs, where you need to build capacity and talk about the different ideas to achieve that more long-term. Next slide. And who verifies this? Like I said, this is third-party certified. So S F I creates the standard itself and helps monitor those every five years. We do do an update to these. So we are going to be getting into a new update in the next few years. However, we don't do the verification. There are third-party auditors that you see on the screen here that get hired to do this type of work. They are held to anti-students in the U S and, uh, other standards in, um, Canada. But what they are, they meet those standards to come out and do those auditing processes. They do an on-the-ground inspection to make sure that you're verifying what you said you did is accomplished. And that would be the next step after the grant program if the city decided to pursue that. Next slide. So just as about thanking you and having the opportunity again to speak, um, happy to take questions. happy to take questions and I'm at this time.
Any questions? Do you have them? Go ahead, Christopher Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Martini, and thank you, Josh. First, I guess, how much is the grant and who applied for it? Was that something that was done by your, on your own or with team? I'm just really excited about getting funds to invest in our trees, so I'm grateful for it. Just curious as to that.
I think the grant is $65,000. Yes. And we applied for it as like the Green Burian Partnership team. I've been the primary contact with Diamond Head Consulting, and we will be back probably in like May 2026 with Diamond Head Consulting to share the results.
Thank you very much, man. This is fantastic work as it's hard to find funding to do anything nowadays, so $65,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but it's great. And it goes into the health of our canopy, so thank you.
Kevin, may I more?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I guess, I guess my question is going to be just the follow-up and seeing how this would potentially roll into any next steps. Like, I understand that achieving those benchmarks is a way of making ourselves more qualified for future grant applications or for other opportunities, but I'm just curious what some of those opportunities are that this is kind of positioning us for.
Absolutely. So other foundations that do kind of grant programs are starting to look at this as a way to understand what people are investing in. That there's always the question in a lot of grant programs is saying, what have you done to prove that you've done projects in this area? And this is a good way to indicate you've done projects in 109 different ways. Community engagement, we do a lot of community engagement in urban forestry. We recognize indigenous people's rights through the work we're doing. You're talking about not only the air, the water, and the ecology of the natural lands, protecting sites is in this. So there's a different mechanism for each way to talk about how in different perspectives depending on the funder, how you're showcasing what you're doing. So now you're taking all the work that you've already done and kind of compiling it into a dossier in one place so that people can pull from it to say, this is how we can showcase our work, and this is how we can show we're strong because we've done these types of projects before.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that, that it's a really good opportunity for us to, you know, look at a standard that's not just a Burian standard, but benchmark ourselves against something that was created by SFI. And then, kind of as Mike mentioned earlier in his presentation, it's not just me. It's like I talked to parks, I've talked to public works. It's a really good opportunity to look at it top to bottom. So it's a good just like health checkup for our programs is the kind of where we're at. And, you know, that credential would show a lot, but also this benchmarking is really helpful for us in terms of how we're just thinking about planning in the future.
Okay, well, thank you both very much. Now we'll bring Casey Stanley back up for the Parks Facilities Wayfinding Sign Plan Update.
Good evening again. I'm Casey with the City of Burian Parks and Recreation Cultural Services Director. And I'm happy there's so many people here tonight because we get to show a great concept draft concept that I'm excited for everyone to see. The City of Burian has contracted with SOMAS to provide a comprehensive sign plan for the Parks and Recreation Facility. And the new system will build upon the engagement work from the Downtown Wayfinding Sign Project and the City's Branding Guide. I am here with Holly Williams, the Outreach Facilitator from SOMAS, who will present the draft Parks and Facility signage concepts.
Thank you, Casey.
Any help you need from me?
Okay, thanks. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, okay. As Casey mentioned, my name is Holly Williams. I'm with SOMAS. We are a consulting firm that specializes in public projects, anything kind of within the the public realm. Signage and wayfinding typically is associated with that, so we have a lot of experience with projects like this. And this is a fun one. We're really excited to be a part of the team and to share with you our progress with this. And I think we're at a really good point to touch base. So with that, we'll jump in. So with the project goals, it's important to kind of identify them at the front end. And then we also, through the stakeholder process, the engagement process, and then touchpoints with you, we like to revisit those to make sure that we are staying on track with the goal of the project. It's, for this project, it's to enhance community identity through providing a highly recognizable and consistent signage design. Identify and develop a signed family, and I'll show you what that looks like in a further slide. Create a timeless and cost-effective and durable design. We want to make sure that it is long-lasting both aesthetically and maintenance and the quality of the sign. We worked with stakeholders to create a welcoming and inclusive design that was identified the very beginning that that was important to the city and the stakeholders. Solicit feedback to move this through to a one preference, concept, plan, sign, and then we'll move that through final design for to be able to implement citywide, but starting with one identified park location. Is there a tricked? There we go.
Oh.
As mentioned by actually a couple of the previous presentations here, Burian's a green city, which is really exciting for us. You can see with this map in green are all the different park locations. We've identified some other city facility locations, but that is the focus of these park signs, including the facility signs and wayfinding signs that we'll get into. So we went through a process to determine, we worked with the city, went out on a field visit and did an inventory of where these signs would be located. With that field trip, we also looked at, you know, what is existing, the signage out there. As you can see here, it's kind of a range of different sign types, materials, look and feel. And so part of this process is to identify what's existing, what's working, what's not working, and then move forward with a cohesive, consistent signage approach. With looking at these sign types, different sign types and designs, this was actually a really great conversation to have with the city guidance staff and the stakeholders to identify, you know, what does work and what doesn't as far as maintenance, durability, legibility. So that was just kind of the start of those conversations as we move through the design. So at the first stakeholder meeting, we asked the question, and I need to find my cue here because I cannot read it.
What do you like about your favorite park and trail?
Thank you. Yeah. Did you hear that?
What do you like about your favorite park, trail, or outdoor recreation space?
Thank you, Casey. So we asked the stakeholders this at the first presentation, and as you can see, the response was a variety of it being welcoming, accessible, connected. This is just a really good way to start the conversation with the stakeholders to understand what should be reflected in the sign designs. We also asked what makes an outdoor recreational space feel welcoming and enjoyable, knowing that that's one of the city's main goals. That started a great conversation and feedback with the stakeholders. Some of the responses were, you know, used by families, place to gather, sense of connection. These are important for us to understand as we move through the design process. We also looked at the existing color palettes for the signage. We of course have the City of Burian color palette, the Burian Creative District color palette, and then the downtown wayfinding signage that's already been implemented. And I forgot to mention earlier that that's a project that actually SOMAS, we were KPG at the time, but SOMAS helped the city work with. So we're very familiar with the downtown wayfinding signage and that stakeholder process that came with it. These are those signed family types that I mentioned earlier. And so when we look at a family of signage and part of the design, we look at the hierarchy of the signs, the sign aesthetics, color scale, material, legibility is really, really key to successful signage projects, the frequency of signs, and the sign content. And this is just an example of what that family can look like and what we're moving forward with for this design. We also asked the city and stakeholders to provide us some sign examples that they liked. You can see here, this is just a sampling of that. But we already started to see a theme that was pretty consistent with simple forms, clean lines, a nice green and blue color palette, and then highly durable. So moving into past that stakeholder process, or the first workshop, I should say, we went through kind of this back and forth that you can see with this kind of simplified timeline here of engaging with the city staff, what we call the Guidance, City Guidance Group that you see in kind of the blue dots, vetting our concepts through that process, going to the first stakeholder workshop, then we went back to the city guidance staff, discussed what we heard, came up with some designs, and got input from the city, and then moved into the stakeholder workshop number two that I'll walk through here. So through that process, I'm going to step through the three designs that we shared with the city staff first, got their feedback, as I mentioned, and then refined that before we brought it to the second stakeholder workshop. So this one's called Burian in Motion. And these are really what I like to call napkin sketches that are really high-level concepts that we can easily throw away. It's just enough to get feedback and then continue to refine before we go down a road that maybe wasn't the right direction. This one, the input was, or the feedback was that it was a little bit too dark. The blue maybe didn't feel like the right color, the dark blue for City of Burian, and then it felt, you know, maybe a little corporate and that our integration wasn't quite right. And the next one, Concept Two, we played around with playing with the topography of the parks. The city staff liked the playfulness of that. But there were some issues with this as far as just maybe it being a little too busy, especially integrating some, you know, the art into it. And, you know, just maybe complicated when you try to do this at every particular park site. And then the third one, Earth Meets Water. Again, we, you know, are playing with that blue tone from the color palette. And the feedback from the city was is that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, Burian feels really green. It's park-heavy. Let's lean more into the the green color palette. But they did like the, you know, some of the softer shapes around the the square, square backgrounds. So with that feedback, then we moved into the second stakeholder workshop. We dropped the Creative District color palette. It was going to be too hard to incorporate all those, the color palettes. So we leaned still into the Burian color, more with the greens, and then the downtown wayfinding signage. So through this process, we also wanted to start checking the contrast in these signs. Legibility is so important in wayfinding signage. And so we ran the, each concept through the contrast checker. I won't go into too much detail with this with the time that we have here. But what we're trying to do is just make sure that it's highly legible with the colors. And then we have Concept A here, which is the Green Burian. So this is what we brought to the second stakeholder group. With these concepts, you'll see that we're showing it without the art element here. On the next one, you can see how the art can be incorporated into the the design. And I'm skipping through here pretty fast now, so you guys feel free to stop me if you want me to hold on any of these. And then we went through the contrast checker and then also the color blindness checker just to verify that this was all, it'll all be safe and legible. The second concept, Concept B, we played with some friendly shapes here that you can see. The green and then a nice brown base for a canvas for the art. And then the second one, you'll see what that looks like with public art incorporated into that with some guidance with the public artists of keeping, you know, a nice white transparent tone and some, you know, contrast with the shapes. But just a nice canvas for public art to celebrate Burian's diversity through these art elements. We checked colorblindness and contrast. And then the third one here is called Bold Burian, where we really played with nice, fun, bright colors. The input from the stakeholder group on this one is they liked the playfulness of it, but it felt, the shapes felt a little corporate, not quite Burian. So where we ended moving forward is progressing. Concept A and Concept B, the stakeholders in the city did like the pedestrian directional wayfinding piece of this that's nice and colorful and legible. So we'll incorporate that into the final designs of A and B. So at this point, through this process, we are going to be taking this into the public engagement phase of the project. We'll ask a variety of questions through a survey on the website and other various ways that the city will advertise that survey. This is just an example. This was one of our most recent projects with the University Place signage project of how we were able to ask questions in a way that the public can tell us what they like or don't like aspects of the signage versus having them vote. That way, as the designers, we can then incorporate that feedback and maybe even come up with a hybrid of the two concepts versus being stuck with, you know, one or two and not being able to incorporate all the feedback. Trying to progress it here. There we go. So there was concept A and B that will move forward to the public engagement um part of this project. Any questions? Sorry, I know that was a lot of information that I went through.
No, thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Andrade and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, my personal, I liked concept B, but that's just me. Um, with the incorporation of the additional colors in the following concept. But I did want to ask a question specifically to the pedestrian and the vehicle wayfinding signs. Is it, I would assume, is it very similar to what we see currently where you can't add, should you need to add, that you then have to take down the entire sign to add something else?
Yeah, you know, we haven't until we know a a preferred sign, we haven't really figured out the nuances of that design yet. Um, we've done it both ways where it can be, you know, one whole piece and then you you have to replace that or um design it in pieces where things can be added. Um, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
That's what I was asking. Um, and then just one last statement. Uh, when you did initially show all of the different park signs, it looked like I was looking at different cities, different parks in different cities. So I love that this is going through a a revisit. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, great presentation. Thank you for this uh questions on the stakeholder group. Has that been the the same stakeholder group of the individuals you you shared? It hasn't been one? Any community members yet? That's where we're going to next, just for clarification. That's what I thought. Love the great, the stakeholders. There's a lot of uh names of people that are really, I think, uh on the ground in the community, so that's great. And then there's staff guidance. Is staff guidance just uh Parks and Rec Department or does it involve other departments? Uh, I'd like to make sure that our communications department gets a look at this. Our permitting department, since permitting gets a lot of signage permits requests from all over the city. And also our communications department will be promoting our city and signage will be critical. I just wanted to make sure that it's it's involves other departments.
Yeah, as we go into the next phase, because at this point, it's just the concept. And so then, once we get into the design phase, then we'll be working with um permitting in the sense of like, what what are the uh, because we're gonna be doing some signs that are in the right of way, because it's gonna be directional signs going to our parks. So we'll be working with them on that. And then comms, when we start to work on, yes, when we get to the communication and definitely with the marketing out to the community when we're doing the surveys to get feedback and definitely making sure that we're following our uh our own guidelines.
That's great. Thank you. One suggestion is to just make sure you reach out to our high schools. I know particularly the Evergreen High School just got a brand new workshop with the equipment, brand new equipment. I think there's a great opportunity for incorporating our youth um that want to learn about construction, art and jobs like that, as well as provide us feedback onto signage that's relevant to the next generation folks, right? Um, I see signage as something that's, that it's a beacon for us. So I think having an element that it really makes it so that people want to take those selfies at our signage, want to share on social media. This is here, this is cool. I think that's gonna be a a great element to hear feedback from you. So thank you.
Councilmember Reiki.
Um, I just have three questions or two plus, okay. Um, the first question um is around removal of um old signs. And um I also noticed that there's still some of the old camping uh ordinance signs out there um that exist. So I was wondering about um some of the old signage that would go away and what the timeframe on removal of old signage and uh know that this replacement signage will take a little bit. And then I had also heard there was some talk about whether or not we'll be having renaming of park names into indigenous names. Is this a part of that discussion or has that gone to the wayside?
Uh, great question. So I'm gonna answer the first one. So we're only talking about the signs and parks. Those are the only signs that we're talking about. And uh a few will be adding probably new wayfinding to the parks. Because right now, there are, there's only in the downtown, there's only wayfinding signs to the downtown, from the downtown. And so that would be extending out to our other parks that don't have directional signs like Hilltop, uh Matheson, uh Manhattan, Lakeview, like people that don't, aren't aware of those. And so we'll do some pedestrian signs to those parks. And then when it comes to replacing all of our twenty-eight park signs and then every sign within that park, it's gonna be a long process. It's gonna be way past my time here. Um, as we have budget, we will identify a park. Our first park that we're going to work in is Lakeview. That's gonna be our pilot project. We're going to replace the sign there and we're gonna put some other signs, some pedestrian, or some wayfinding signs within that park because there's a dog park there, there's two different types of playgrounds, there's a walking area. Um, and then test those out, see how it works, see how they work in action, get some feedback and see if there's any adjustments. Then as we move on to a next park that we don't have a sign in, we're gonna replace it there. And then if there's a sign that's in bad condition, then we'll replace that one. So that's how we're gonna go about it and we have to be able to make sure the signs are affordable for us to be able to replace them. Because that's, that's the issue that we are currently in, the current signs that we have in our parks. Even though they're really old, those ones cost like five thousand dollars to replace. And that's a big hit to our budget. So that's, so that's gonna be a long process. And then with our capital projects, if we're doing a capital projects within our parks, we're going to make that part of that process too. And then um for indigenous, yes, that is um one of the things we've been thinking about this in the concepts. You can see that there's a place for a name and that will take some time as we work um and have those relationships and talk about what the the name of the land was at that time and they, making sure it's appropriate and we're going down the right road and making sure that we're making all the connections and not jumping into something so we don't want to cause harm.
Deputy Member Moore.
Thank you. And and I had one of the same questions, just about what the rollout looked like. But I I have two questions as well. The first one is, um, I know that a few of our parks have some kind of sponsorship or partnership or relationship with other organizations. Is that gonna have to be kind of negotiated or worked out with each one? Like I know there's a Toyota dog park.
Yeah, so the current Toyota dog park one is actually um expired and they did not want to renew it. So that sign is just currently up. It does need to come down. So that'll be one of the, when we do the Lakeview, that sign will come down and we will be putting up a new one.
Okay, perfect. And and the other question I had was um, it had to do with the original signs. Are some of those historic to like when Burian was founded? And are we gonna work with the Highland Historical Society or, you know, is there anything significant there?
Good question on that. I do not know the answer. I'm assuming um we have a, a, there's a a bunch of different signs out there, maybe the originals in nineteen ninety-three when Burian first formed and there was a, and some of those signs would make sense. There's some, the roar were replaced, they were probably not historical. Um, and then there's parks like King, that we took over from King County to that never got a sign.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
I'm aware with the the new signs, if we're gonna have any updated technology, whether it's a QR code to talk about the history of the park. Um, you know, I think it's just when you're, you're able to interact with the park, it just uh, it kind of helps with, okay, this is what it's about. Just wondering if that's anything that's been given some thought.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Um, we have talked about that and um have incorporated some placeholders for opportunity for that.
And I don't know if everybody was clear about the public art part of it. I just want to make sure that that was clear, that we're hoping to incorporate public art into all of our signage. And so it would be a wrap of some sort, so similar to our signal boxes where we could go out every five or ten years and uh do uh call for artists to, if they want to submit something that represents that park, their identity, their culture and um to be putting those on the um signs in the parks. And so that's what our plan is, build the signs for a campus.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's any other council questions, please follow up with Casey. Thank you. All right, well, now we'll move into council reports. Are there any council members that would like to start with a report? If not, I can. Councilmember Andrade, go ahead.
I'll start, um. I was gonna make the announcement about the trees, but Councilmember Garcia has already done so. We've heard it a few times, but trees, yes, deadline. Make sure to get yours. Um, there've been a few events that I've been able to participate over the last couple of weeks. One of them was a joint transportation board meeting that we had. Um, a lot of the key stakeholders were present, uh SCA Airport, Port of Seattle, um Sound Transit, Metro, you name it, they were all there. And this is all in preparation for FIFA. Transportation's gonna be big come next year. The plans are already in play. They are just waiting for the drop of all the dates. Once that is dropped, then they'll know uh exactly where their routes, the new routes that they're adding and where their older routes are going to be rerouted if need be. Um, we had our kids' day, fire department, great event, huge, huge attendance. Um, I know I was able to participate in the dunk tank. Uh, I know Mayor Shilling was also there. It was a lot of fun and an event that happens every year and love that this year we could participate in a different way. Uh, welcoming Burian was also happening at the same time, welcoming everyone to our city. Uh, we lead by example, so making sure that we can be neighborly and friendly with everyone who is here um that comes into our town. It 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 was, it was a great event. Uh, last, uh, I did a tour for Habitat with Habitat for Humanity with other planning commissioners. I'm happy to see it in person. We see it from the freeway. I know that their current wall is in ISO. I did ask questions as to who takes care of the wall. It is in in uh Wash Dot's, Wash Dot's hands. So hopefully we see that cleared up soon. Um, and I'm excited to see the completion of it. It's gonna house forty-one new families. And let's see, I think that that is it. Oh, uh, one last kind of not council-related item. Last night was B-Town, actually, this one is B-Town Fiesta, thanks to Discover Burian, happened last night. It was a great event, went from twelve to two, twelve to eight. Unfortunately, the attendance we saw was a little lower than usual, given what we see currently in our political climate. Uh, it was kind of a given that we were gonna see lower attendance, but also lower vendors. Uh, but one thing from that that came up, as it started getting darker, the lights in the trees went on. And for me, I was just looking at the tree right at the right time and the lights came on and it was somewhat magical. I just have to say that something so simple as lights in a tree, I ju- I don't know, it just makes it, it gives it a different feel in your community. It does give it more of a welcoming uh effect. And for me, I know that in asking the gentleman who was putting up the lights, he said that they're gonna be taken down in March and and I don't know what it would take to ask if we can see that the lights stay up either longer or throughout, throughout the year. Because it was really that fun thing just to see it come and light up our city, our downtown area. Um, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll say a couple of things of what I've been up to. Um, today I spoke to the seventh and eighth grade classes of Glacier Middle School. And it's for part of their Gear Up program, which is a program to help seventh and eighth graders be identified to be followed with counselors and supportive services all the way through the end of high school to get into college and have a college opportunity. That's a federal grant that the Highland School District had. And so I just spoke with them about being mayor and what I did in college and what that pathway was like. And so that was an interesting opportunity to uh speak with a huge group of seventh and eighth graders um about what they, about what they want to do. Um, over the weekend, I also attended the B-Town, the B-Town Fiesta, and even though it was low, low attendance for all the different reasons, it was, it's still a great traditional thing that the the city does and gets the community out for. Um, all, over the weekend, I was uh in attendance of the groundbreaking for Mary's, our Mary's Place project with Mercy Housing, where there's gonna be ninety units of um of housing for homeless families, homeless women and homeless kids. And it was a phenomenal groundbreaking. It had everybody who was in partnership with that, with that project that we um, as you remember, council, I think it was this council that voted to pass the emergency zoning to allow that project to get the uh multi-million, multi-millions of dollars it needed to move forward. So it was great to be at that groundbreaking. It was a huge highlight, I think, of the work that um uh we've done a lot of, on a lot of service-based levels for um homeless families, homeless kids. And there's a lot of uh partnership there being, being presented. Mary's Place, Mercy Housing, the governor was there, the Department of Commerce, the county, um, it was just, it was a phenomenal um beginning of what's to come. So that was great. Um, and then some of the events also that uh other folks here were at over the last couple of weeks. Uh, I did the uh Hospitality House Walk uh that Deputy Mayor Moore and Councilmember Garcia were both at. Um, another great, another great way to support uh a very important nonprofit here in the city of Burian. Um, additionally, the welcoming Burian event was that day. Uh, and that was, that was great, greatly attended and a lot of fun on a sunny day. But most importantly, I let a bunch of kids dunk me in a tub of water. And um that was a lot of fun at Kids' Day uh at the fire station. Uh, so uh you all missed your opportunity to to dunk me in water. Um, that was a lot of fun, though. All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, did the walk. Uh, it was fantastic. Uh, great cause. I just want to thank the volunteers that have raised, I think, twelve thousand dollars during that event for uh Hospitality House. Um, also just wanted to share that I too went to the uh B-Town Fiesta. Um, I did hear that as it got later in the day, attendance improved, so that's great to hear. Um, but it was definitely impacted as, but what we see in our community with immigration raids and attacks. Just wanna follow up and just add and recommend that people add the migrant watch hotline phone number. That's eight four four seven two four three seven three seven to your phone. So if you see any activity. Uh, someone did text something to me this morning about potential activity in Burian. It was related to the hotline and they checked. Um, I think it's important that we stay alert even um at all times. Thank you.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So I spoke about an issue and I was able to sit down with uh several restaurants, say a good ten of our restaurants here in Burian. And um, you know, look, this unlicensed food vendor operating with, without health inspection creates serious risk problem to health. Unsafe, unsafe propane tanks are being handled and could, this could be an explosion or a health risk. Um, also, the biggest thing here that I get upset about is tax evaders paying no business tax or licenses in the city of Burian. Uh, it affects legitimate businesses uh against uh, when they follow the rules and they operate within the law uh without these uh vendors of paying taxes to the city. So that means uh less money for parks, less money for police, less money for city services. Uh, this is a, this creates unfair competition for law-abiding businesses here in Burian. Uh, puts residents at risk from uh basically unsanitized food and the operations. I am happy to say that they have a great communication with uh county council member Teresa Mosqueta. Glad she met with the restaurant owners, actually drove by one of these illegal facilities operating in their own homes, cooking food in their garage. Um, and they also have just passed to enhance enforcement for rule uh rule breakers. Uh, Burian needs to coordinate actions with the health inspection and I would say tax authorities and law enforcement. Uh, and for, and then enforce existing business license requirements and be consistent about it. And uh I'm calling for immediate action to this. I think that this is uh basic fairness for public uh safety. Uh, this stuff causes salmonella and all sorts of different uh diseases that could affect children and our elderly in our community. Places are getting, getting set up all over uh Burian. And I know that uh we don't regulate the health and safety. That is the county's responsibility. But I'm happy that um the restaurants took it on their own, not just to come here to Burian or call our council members, but also have a conversation with King County Council members to be able to say, this is enough, this is a health risk. Uh, this is uh tax evaders, tax cheaters, tax, payroll tax fraud. Um, and so I'm glad that they're taking this as serious as it should be taken. So I appreciate that report. They participated in the Burian Fiesta, was great. Um, you know, I think that uh, you know, I remember when it first started about eight years ago and it just makes me happy to see that we're continuing to celebrate our, you know, our differences in our community. Um, I know that uh there continues to be conversation with DES. I know that there continues to be conversation with DESC. And there needs to be more, right? I think that management needs to continue to have conversations with city manager and our mayor on making sure they're working with law enforcement. I don't think it's something that we should take lightly. And I'll continue to say that when I voted for this is to be able to have a system that would be able to help people get a second chance in life, and to be able to be a place where it could help people suffering from mental health and drug addiction, not to be a place where there's gonna be drug dealing in the situation that I see today. And I gotta tell you, it makes me very angry to see this. When we talk about needs of facilities like this across the county, across different cities, we're the first ones to step up, and I'm calling on DESC to clean it up, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few points to share with council. Several items have already been discussed by council members. There were several successful events occurring in Burian since council last met. Annual Arts of Glow, annual welcoming Burian and B-Town Fiesta, events that celebrate the many cultures that are present in Burian. Annual Kids' Day event hosted by King County Fire District Number Two, which included demonstrations from King County Fire and a flyover from King County Sheriff's Office Guardian One helicopter. Bit of a humorous note on that, we didn't know that Guardian One has a siren. So if there is a helicopter that is not stopping, the siren can be used from Guardian One. It's just great to see and hear. A thank you to staff and our community connectors and partners in the community for making all events a success. And thanks to Mayor Shelling and Councilmember Andrade for being excellent sports and volunteering to spend time in the dunk tank. Thank you, Bob. The Parks Department's efforts to replace all bulbs, all bulbs in field lights at Moser Park, including fifty, sixty fixtures that were no longer working, nine new security lights to curb some of the ongoing activity that has occurred affecting operations of the park. That activity has received the attention and support from law enforcement, so we hope to continue to make our public spaces safe, which is one of the reasons why we're replacing these lights to increase public safety as best we can with our limited resources. The written report that is included in your packets includes information on action taken recently by the Burian Airport Committee at its last meeting. And some of its action was to submit a recommendation to the council body related to the work proposed by the Port of Seattle at Matheson Park. Would just share that with council, as I confirmed to the airport committee that I would highlight its presence in the manager's report. Lastly, I want to congratulate, congratulations to Mary's Place and Mercy Housing for hosting a groundbreaking ceremony on Friday in Burian, which was attended by Governor Ferguson. As a reminder to council, the project is possible due to action from this council that saved federal funding upwards of six million dollars and helped to secure an additional one million in grant funding from King County. Few project details, this particular project will include over, at or over two hundred emergency shelters for families with onsite services, including housing support, health resources, and youth programs, in addition to ninety units of permanent affordable housing for families earning at or below sixty percent of the area median income, at least thirty of which will be reserved for families transitioning out of homelessness. So thank you, council, for that excellent work, and we look forward to having those two facilities open in Burian. And that is what I have to share.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move into public comments. We have thirteen people signed up for public comments, and the clerk will now announce the rules of public comment.
Public comment guidelines are summarized on the screen and can be viewed in Section Five of the Council Rules of Order. The deadline to sign up to speak or submit written comments for this meeting was four thirty P.M. Community members may state their name and city of residence and speak for two minutes or less. The total time for the comment period is thirty minutes. Comments are prioritized as follows. First, Burian residents. Second, Burian business owners or their representatives. Third, employees who identify Burian as their home or business location. At this time, staff will share the public comment signup list. For those in person, please speak at the lectern. For those on Zoom, please prepare to unmute yourself. There are thirteen community members signed up to speak. The first person signed up to speak is Dawn Lemel.
Oh, Dawn, can you press the button on the right? Nope, didn't go on yet. Yeah, no, it didn't go on yet. Oh. Thank you, Casey. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
There, perfect.
Okay. Dawn Lemel, three, three point. Over the past five months, numerous reporters, both local and regional, have asked me if I'd be willing to speak publicly about what I believe the council would do regarding mismanaged and incorrect zoning issues that Burian faces. I told every reporter I was withholding comment and extending good faith toward this council and the city, believing we could work together. Tonight, I now publicly give full permission for anything I have to say to be repeated, reported, or published. As citizens, we spoke repeatedly with some of you as you expressed concerns that you two were not made aware of the implications of the zoning proposal. You understood and supported our concerns over both lack of communication from the city and zoning designated without thoroughly investigating, understanding, and adhering jurisdictions and guidelines that must be followed regarding critical areas in the SMP. We heard some of you repeatedly express that the city's process was flawed and should be rectified. In your own words, you literally asked us to trust you and stated you promised to have the comp plan amended if we would just understand that the deadline the city was under. You reassured us you would have our backs and we could work together to fix a wrong. Lately, beginning with the workshop, it's been disappointing and disheartening to bear witness to the city not taking accountability in the steps necessary to safeguard its citizens. Now we sense that some of you may choose to step back on your commitment to fix the issue. At the last public meeting, we heard attempted justifications for not addressing the errors. A running theme was in actually stating that if the city fixes it for one, you must open it to fix it for all. Yes, if zoning in any areas conflicted with critical areas or SMP, it must be opened and fixed. If a parcel developed, cannot be, is, if a parcel is currently zoned and cannot be developed as such, it should be changed. Let me again state the issue at hand for anyone who may read about it tomorrow. The zoning process was erroneously designed when absolute requirements and state-directed restrictions were not respected, followed, or adhered to by city staff. If you do not correct this, you are equally culpable. You asked our communities to trust you would work with us to correct the wrong. We believed in you then. This room is partially empty tonight because so many people have lost faith that you'll do the right thing. Prove you are worthy of our trust and direct the city to open and amend the land use and zoning designations in the comp plan in turn.
We'll have Stan and then Chastine Edgar.
Stan Lemel, three, three point. At the last meeting, we heard city staff express, quote, "I've heard misinformation spread by different bad actors," end quote. Frankly, citizens are tired of being accused of being bad actors or disseminating false information. The city's attempt at to misdirect is blatant and transparent. Citizens, citizens have told you that the SMP and the critical area requirements and restrictions were not followed. You were sent an eleven-page document supporting these facts over the weekend. One of you worried at the last meeting about setting a precedent, a precedence with this issue by using taxpayer funds for a specific group, stating that with a levy in November, you want to show how responsible you are with taxpayer funds. This issue applies to many communities, however, not just one. The city made a mistake. It would be irresponsible not to use taxpayer funds to correct that mistake. Not doing so will send an even greater message in these times when you seek support for levies and elections. We heard, quote, "The kinds of projects people are worried about are not realistic. Very little will actually change because regulations must be met," end quote. The bottom line is not whether, is not whether you believe something can or can't be built. It's that you cannot say with absolute certainty it won't happen when the current flawed zoning permits it. As property owners, we're exposed to significant implications under the flawed zoning. A possibility exists for current zoning to be manipulated by one to the detriment, to the detriment of many. One of you said your job as elected official is to support not only citizens, but also staff, recognizing their hard work. Yes, that is your job, and we ask you to do that job in times when the staff excels and in times when they misstep. We heard, quote, "As a council member, I'd like to be able to advocate," end quote. As citizens, we'd like to be able to trust that you will, in fact, do the right thing tonight. Respectfully, we'll sit quietly as you discuss the issue and then ask that our collective voices be accorded the same respect.
Thank you. Chastine?
Hello, my name's Chastine Edgar, and I live in the shoreline of Burian. I'm asking that the council put forth an amendment that, that covers the cost of correcting the mistakes that were made by the city's planning department, and unfortunately, by you. These, these are inconsistencies, okay, between the shoreline master plan and between the comprehensive plan. And you have an obligation to correct it under the law. That is the law. You can't, you can't sidestep it, okay? And that's what I perceive happened at the last meeting on the eighth. Some of you were willing to stand by following the law, and some of you then started being wishy-washy soda crackers about it. So that's number one. Number two, the trees in Matheson Park. The trees in Matheson Park should be topped or they should be crowned. Each one of those big trees with, holds back one million gallons of stormwater, and that was not even considered in the environmental impact statement. That impact statement, or it wasn't really an impact statement. It was an effort to avoid making an impact statement, was not even considered. So I say that you stand firm on saving those trees because two years planting a, a one-gallon tree to grow and then only watering it for two years is not enough time to establish trees. Thank you.
Eric Matheson?
Well, a quick visit to the Matheson Park would show the removal of these six trees next to a children's playground is a vast overreach by the Port of Seattle. It would do nothing for aircraft safety. These six trees are surrounded on all sides by trees of similar size. Maybe some are a foot yard shorter, but they're all there on, on Matheson Park land and surrounding private residences. Eliminating these white trees might allow, allow planes to fly one yard lower, but that will allow planes to fly lower, but, you know, lower wouldn't make that much difference even in an emergency landing situation. So the port's entire premise is this. These trees must be destroyed because in five years, maybe, they'll be over the designated height limit, even though it makes no difference to aircraft safety. Most interesting part of, of the presentation, I thought, was the slide that showed, here's the airport, and here's the area they want as a safety zone. And I couldn't help but notice that Matheson Park was kind of circled here, half in their safety corridor, which I don't think there is really. I'm beginning to think there is no designated one that they can point to. Anyway, Matheson Park, half in, half out of this safety corridor, and the part that trees they want to eliminate are outside their safety corridor. There is an environmental impact statement on these exact trees. It should be studied, it's an independent study. That should be studied. The port staffers want to lump these trees, these six trees in with about three hu, two hundred other trees.
Thank you, sir.
That are by, okay, or just by, just by the flight path. And I think this should be, we should think of these things differently and slow down and think about these six trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Is August Hahn on Zoom? Go ahead, August.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Good evening, City Council. August Hahn, Burian resident. I served on the Burian Planning Commission from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Even at that time, we were talking about the updated comp plan. We knew it was gonna be a massive undertaking, and time has proven us right. While there has been turnover in the commission, in staff, and especially on the council, having many eyes on the update is not a problem. It is good that so many have contributed, as the plan reflects the needs of all the city, not just one area. Please do not open the door for one small slice of the city to manipulate the council into changing the zoning. The growth target doesn't change, so that density will have to be placed somewhere else. Then that area will come to you, hat in hand and crying poverty, and by your own precedence, you will then have to rezone them. This will happen over and over again. You'll be trying to push a soap bubble around and find a spot for it to land. Don't do this. It's unfair to whoever you finally find that who won't, or can't, or simply doesn't know how to complain to you for them to shoulder the burden alone. Thank you.
Is Dave Fitzgerald on Zoom? Go ahead, Dave.
Yes, I am here. Dave Fitzgerald, three, 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 three point as well. And again, I apologize that we have to talk again and take time about this to talk about the zoning. It is clear from the history, this is a city problem, a, and I, I would disagree with Mr. Hahn who just spoke, is we always clean up. In business, I have to go back and fix things. We may have missed something in a document, we clean it up. That's what we do. It's just normal. The zoning was done and rushed through because of errors and oversights in the comprehensive plan. We must now align, and not just to fix for one community, but align, and not, it's not a developer amendment of the comprehensive plan. And so we need to fix it. Couple other things I wanted to address quickly was I appreciate council members' modest comments on DESC. I wanted to see that it wasn't lost again, because we talked about it a lot two weeks ago. But we need to keep the pressure on, on DESC. And I agree with his appreciation of law enforcement and support in their efforts at DESC. So appreciate the police doing all the work that they have to there. And it's important that we support all our law enforcement, local, state, and federal, in all that they do in our community. And third, as a frequent flyer, which is again why I'm on Zoom tonight, I support any safety measures for the airport and appreciate the mitigation plans that they have put forth to make the corridor safe. It's okay by me to remove the trees and replant, and I love what they're doing to replant them. So thank you.
Thank you. Is Grace Stiller on Zoom? Go ahead, Grace.
Yes, so I'm an advocate for keeping the trees in Matheson Park, the matured trees. I'm not for taking down the trees and replanting small trees. First, first of all, the mature trees are not in the flight corridor or the buffer area. And under, and secondly, and thank you, Chastine, two years is not sufficient to ensure that the new trees are planted, that are planted will grow and survive. It takes more than two years. And the port is trying to shift this responsibility to the city, and this is not acceptable. And thank you to the city council for advocating for the trees and the community that wants to keep the trees in Matheson Park. The port presentation on, on why to remove the trees was not adequate. They didn't even include the carbon sequestration value of the trees. This wasn't brought into the, to the equation, and it needs to be. There needs to be an environmental impact statement, not assessment. The, the value of the trees, and thank you to Deputy Mayor Becerra, Councilmember Linda Akey, Hugo, for your input to these trees, carbon sequestration, water sequestration, shade, recreational value. The port is shifting the small tree maintenance to the city. And my question is, why is a city, and I rebuke you, city staff, for acquiesce to the port to support taking down these trees that are valuable to the committee, to the community? I, I again support keeping the mature trees. This is not the time to take the mature trees down.
Thank you. Is Jessica Mangler online? Go ahead, Jessica.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Jessica Mangler, and I'm a relatively new homeowner on Lake Burian. My partner and I are renovating a family home that's been here for decades. We care deeply about equitable housing and want to be part of the solution. In fact, we have already held many discussions about how this lot could accommodate more housing and how our remodel is forward-thinking with potential plans for one or more ADUs. But even with the newly adopted zoning regulations, other restrictions such as the tree ordinance and shoreline protections severely limit any additional opportunities to build more housing on our lot. That's why I believe lots on Lake Burian should not be subjected to R-two or R-three zoning. It doesn't help solve our state's housing dissonance challenge. It just creates confusion and false expectations. I've heard council members and other residents say, if we can't build it, then it won't happen. But that is misleading. Zoning affects land valuation, and land valuation drives up property taxes. Upzoning properties will elevate property taxes, which then decreases the ability of residents to build- Upzoning properties will elevate property taxes, which then decreases the ability of residents to build supplemental housing. We should align zoning with environmental realities so residents can invest in actual housing instead of being precluded from this through inflated taxes. I'm disappointed in the planning department's lack of research and the divisive tone this issue has taken. Name calling, lack of transparency, and empty promises are not productive. They ignore the real challenges we face and undermine trust. Most of us are not opposed to growth. We're asking for practical, mindful planning and honest leadership. I feel that because failures by the city of Burian's planning department led to these misalignments among the comprehensive plan, zoning, and other regulations, the city administration must bear the burden of correcting these misalignments.
Thank you. Is Kay on Zoom? Go ahead, Kay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, council members, planning commission, and also commenters. I really appreciate all the information that is being being given. I would also like to voice my support in keeping the trees in Matheson Park. I think trees are very important to our community and if there's any way that that can be done by topping the trees, I heartily support that. I also think it's very important to revisit the comprehensive plan and zoning amendment and correct it. I don't believe that we should leave an opening for more potential problems. When this whole process first started, we discussed what housing was appropriate for, you know, multi-low, low-density residential housing. And sixplexes were not one of the things that I thought we had agreed upon. And yet Zone 2 and Zone 3 both allow sixplexes. You know, we say that they won't be built, but our legislation is built on previous legislation. If this can be done, if it's allowed, then this can happen. So I would like that also to be considered and I would like us very much to correct these problems that we have in our zoning around Lake Burian, other sensitive areas, and citywide. Basically, I think it needs to happen. We need to really incentivize density where it's appropriate and allow ADUs in all areas, you know, allow it to one house, two ADUs in all areas, and really incentivize more building along our corridors so that we can have more high-capacity transit. That's really what I think is important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. In person, Greg Anderson. Is Greg still here? I don't see Greg anymore. Okay, go ahead, Kate Richardson. Are you still in the audience? There you are.
Kate Richardson, Burian Heights. I mean, Gregory Heights. On August 27th, the port announced a draft of the SEPA checklist, SEPA State Environmental Policy Act. It's a draft. It consists of approximately two dozen questions that the port has to answer in order to make a determination as to whether or not there is an adverse impact on the area, on the, on the areas that are going to be impacted. And if so, they have to take that into account. But they did it very sloppily, in my opinion, and made a determination that there was no impact. The Matheson Park was ignored insofar as having any community value. For example, it had no aesthetic value, it had no recreational value in the, in that checklist. And that's how they based the determination of no significant impact. It is still just a draft. Our input to the port about this, and that's not the only problem. Attached to the checklist was an announcement of the Flight Corridor Program Management. And in that is the map, the rectangular map denoting the flight corridor. It does not match the inverted funnel shape that these folks presented to us today. Additionally, if you take a moment to look at the requirements for noise abatement on plane, leave planes flying out of the airport, they have to go a certain number of miles straight out and attain a certain number of thousands of feet above before they can veer off the flight path to avoid noise problems.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I just started.
Thank you. Just a reminder for folks, you can always email council members more, more of what you were going to say if you, if you hit your two minutes. Is Apneet on Zoom?
Present, yes, sir. Yes. First, good evening, council members, Mayor Schilling, staff, members of the public. Appreciate your guys' time. My name is, again, Apneet Sedu. My four-year-old son actually attends a school in Burian and I handle his daily drop-offs and pickups since the school year began, which is about a few weeks ago. Hopefully, I was talking to you guys in person, but unfortunately I have a flu and stuff, so I can't be there. Not reading off a script, just off the top of my head. But I've noticed a reoccurring and a consistent concerning issue regarding bicycles on a route either going east or westbound from Military Road South toward Anbaum Boulevard, going vice versa. I'm all for bicyclists, right? But there, most bicyclists, they follow the laws, they follow the rules, but there's a handful that do not. And that handful is a detriment to the city. It's a detriment to other jurisdictions who visit Burian, whether to drop off a kid or go grocery shopping, X, Y, and Z. To be clear, again, it's not all bicyclists. But those few individuals who have no disregard for safety for the others and themselves, I think there needs to be some more enforcement on that. Again, I thought I had more time versus other cities. Here, city and Burian only have two minutes to talk. I just want to highlight Burian Municipal Code 8.37. This was amended in 2003. We're in 2025. 8.37.03 says findings, head injuries are a major injury hazard. 8.37.04, bicycles are one of the main factors of that. 8.37.050, requirements requiring a bicycle to wear a helmet. And if not, then it goes to 8.37.060, which is enforcement. If somebody's driving a bicycle, well, number one, enforcement staff can do it. What do they get? A $42 fine. This is in 2003. We're in 2025.
Thank you, Apneet. Yeah. Thank you. And last, Gina Mutter.
My name is Gina Mutter, Lake Burian. Great info tonight about trees and the urban forest plan. Why then did the city push forward density exceeding what was required by the state? There are many issues with this comp plan. My focus for this meeting is on the zoning for shorelines. A year ago, the shoreline of Lake Burian was zoned R1, allowing up to three units in 12,500 square feet. In October 2024, this was rezoned to a new definition of R3, allowing what is the equivalent of 24 units in approximately the same area. That kind of increase, eight times the density, will surely impact the ecological functions of the shoreline and will wipe out tree canopy. If the comp plan is corrected to zone the shoreline of Lake Burian to the updated definition of R1, this will allow more than double the density of a year ago at about eight units per 12,000 square feet. And this change to correct the shoreline zoning does not take a bunch of analysis and effort by the council and staff. Why? Because correcting the comp plan by changing the Lake Burian and Marine shorelines to R1 will bring it into closer alignment with the Shoreline Master Program, Chapter 19.01. Lake Burian shoreline and marine shoreline are regulated shorelines and should be zoned R1 rather than R3. At the previous meeting, the council member said, regulations must be met. And this was stated in the context of speculating that many projects would not get permitted due to the specific site conditions. To this, I respond, developers have resources to get through regulations and process variances. Make no mistake, if it is zoned for this density, you must assume it will be built. We have witnessed it. South King County is burdened by loss of tree canopy and we feel it. To the trees in our neighborhoods, which provide critical ecological functions, I say to those trees, good luck. There is a $15,000 price tag on your canopy. And with 3,500 square foot lots and 80% chance coverage, chances are your days are numbered.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment and we will open our public hearing on the proposed use of fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
I think we have a brief presentation.
And we have a brief presentation by you, Anya.
Luckily, it's not just me. We are going to make Casey come back up here, so we get the whole team.
Or Casey.
I know. Much fun. Well, good evening, mayor, council, and community members that are here. Casey, Sarah and I are here to give a brief presentation about community development block grants before we open the public hearing. I'm Anya Zypansik. I'm your human services manager and we're excited to chat with you. We want to give a real brief overview very quickly about community development block grants. And we'll start really quickly with what is community development block grants or CDBG. We know that government's definitely an acronym soup. We're going to throw a bunch out here. So if you hear CDBG, Community Development Block Grants. So Community Development Block Grants is a federal program administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's been running since the 1970s and utilized to support community development activities that build thriving, resilient communities around the country. Burian became eligible for an entitlement of Community Development Block Grant Funds back in 2018, when our population crossed 50,000. We operate in the city of Burian as what is known as a joint agreement city with King County, meaning that we pay King County out of our entitlement to administer our HUD requirements and reporting, which is honestly a huge steal for us. It's a major cost savings. Considering that if we didn't have HUD or King County administering our HUD funds for us, we would have to hire a full-time staffer and it's significantly more expensive. As a joint agreement city, we also pay into the county's housing stability and housing repair programs, which benefit our residents. And I would like to reiterate, we are one of five joint agreement cities in King County. So there's, we are not the only ones doing this. CDBG projects must primarily benefit low to moderate income populations, which is taken into consideration by staff and our relative commissions when we're discussing potential project ideas to bring forward to you all. You're going to see a handful of numbers over the next slides. We, in, for fiscal year 2026, we are estimating our entitlement amount to be around $392,000 before our set-asides for housing repair and for county administration. This estimate is based on our fiscal year 2025 allocation. We, we note that this is an estimate because we won't actually know how much money we receive for our entitlement for 2026. So if you read through like the public hearing materials, your agenda bills, you'll see numbers. This is based on our fiscal year 2025 contracts. And then also you'll see notes like, or maximum amount allowed, or you'll see a contingency plan around if our entitlement changes. We give ourselves this estimate to say this is approximately how much we anticipate we're going to be receiving. We won't actually know until springtime. We move, this program moves at the speed of the federal government. And so, you know, it takes a little bit of time. But I promise I will not do most of the talking anymore. We just want to give you the quick overview of what the projects we're actually proposing for fiscal year 2026 are. So after county and program set-asides, we are anticipating about $228,000 for programming. We are proposing recommending in three buckets. We, like I said, I want to emphasize these are estimates and that staff support all three of these proposals. And again, there is a contingency plan. If we receive more than we're anticipating, that rarely happens. We have a plan that's been worked out with the county and in our public hearing notice about where those funds will go. But one of the first bucket that we propose is taking a piece for planning and administration. This amount is capped based in federal code as to how much we can actually allocate. But this, we utilize planning and administration dollars to cover some staff salary and benefit time that is spent on CDBG planning activities, invoice reviews, monitoring, participating in joint regional or joint recommendation committee meetings, et cetera. And that allocation, like I said again, is capped. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Sarah and Casey to talk about our human services and our parks projects.
Great. Thanks, Anya. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the proposed use for human services. So we're proposing the allotment of roughly $39,269 to provide continued support to Southwest Youth and Family Services, their Community Resource Center, which was formerly their new futures program. This program, which provides family advocacy and out-of-school support, will serve approximately 200 low to moderate income residents of Burian onsite. And that would be at the Woodridge Park and Arbor Heights Apartments. This allocation was recommended by the Human Services Commission at their August meeting. And this program had previously been provided to residents of the Alcove and Seehurst Apartments. Due to increased rent costs for Southwest Youth and Family Services, it's no longer feasible to run the program onsite at Alcoves. However, they'll continue to provide services to Alcove apartment families. A letter detailing this change has been provided to the Human Services Commission and is included in your council packet. And I will turn it over to Casey one more time.
And so for the capital part, we're going to allocate funds to the Jacob Anbaum Park, which is our, for our capital fund to replace the plaza, plaza pavement that has balled and settled and has created some damaged tree grates in the sidewalk within the new pavement. The damaged payments have created an uneven travel surface that is not compliant with the American With Disabilities Act. And then we'll also, I don't know if we have a next line. Is that it?
No, there's one. There it goes. We're going to go back one.
And so you can see all the damage at the Jacob Anbaum Park. And so we will be replacing all that pavement. The other we'll be doing is new parking lot striping, including ADA stalls. And ADA signage will also be installed. And the total cost of the project will be 215,000, but we're getting, we're putting towards 149,000 from the Community Development Block Grant for this project. I think, is that it?
Yeah. So tonight, we're here to hold the required public hearing as part of our CDBG allocation process. And then after the hearing, we have time for discussion and we're looking for a motion to move this process forward. This is the timeline for what kind of the rest of this process looks like. Like I mentioned earlier, it's the speed of the federal government. We turn everything in in October and then we'll find out our allocation next spring. So we're really just taking our time, but we are on a deadline to get our materials to King County by October 17th. So we are looking for a motion tonight.
Okay, my turn?
Yes.
Okay. The public hearing is now open at 7:33 PM. The city clerk will now go over the rules for order for conducting this public hearing.
Thank you. Similar to the public comment period, those who signed up to speak will have two minutes or less to speak on this topic regarding the proposed use of fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds. There are no community members signed up to speak.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay, seeing none. The public hearing on the proposed use of fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds is now closed at 7:33 PM. We're going to have you come right back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to come right back up. We just got to do our consent agenda first. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Ramona? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Akey. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye for the consent agenda unanimously approved for the consent agenda. All right, well, let's. Can we take a few minutes, actually, just a quick break?
Yes, mayor, I would actually suggest that council does take a break.
Bathroom, all the stuff. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we're back at 7:41. We'll do a quick, a quick discussion of this to see if there's any questions from councils. So this is on the fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant. See if there's any questions from council, or is there a motion to be made on this? Councilmember Akey?
I move to place this item on the consent agenda of the next regular meeting.
Is there a second? Moved by Councilmember Akey, seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Are there any comments or questions?
I'll just state in my motion that I think that these funds are for a good purpose. We need to continue these programs that are going on at Arbor Heights Apartments. And I think it's really important that we make sure that our parks meet ADA requirements, and glad to see that we're able to obtain some funding for that. So those are my only comments.
Go ahead.
But I don't think it's Arbor Heights Apartments, right? It's not, so here's what I got a problem with, because I remember when the shootings happened on Anbaum. We had major problems on Anbaum. And I was one of the advocates of saying, hey, we got to have, we got to have funding to be able to have a facility to be able to help within the Anbaum situation with, you know, a lot of youth running around with, in this whole complex of apartments down Anbaum. But my understanding is that this would be funding somewhere way up north, way in the corner, somewhere where it's not necessarily where there's a bundle of apartment complexes. So my question would be, how do we come up to the decision of funding that particular program at that particular place, but it's out of where the, where the youth hangs out at?
Yeah, great question. And we recognize that the programming that has been occurring for the families at Alcoves has been a very top of mind for council and for human services staff as well. We know that this has been a long-term investment that we've been making with Community Development Block Grant Funds. So the program that was operating at the Alcoves was the New Futures, now Community Resource Center programming. That programming also operates at the Arbor Heights and Woodridge Park apartment complexes here in Burian. The shift was actually made at the request of Southwest Youth and Family Services in order to maintain compliance with CDBG regulations for our entitlement. It is strongly recommended that we are funding programming that exists within the city. It's our entitlement, our funds. We should be funding programming within our city. Due to the lease ending, I know that the council has been made familiar with the changes with Harbor Group Management at Alcoves. They were no longer allowing the programming onsite. Southwest Youth and Family Services entered into partnership with the Navos campus on the same campus area to operate programming there. Their lease is up with Navos. And I promise I will answer your question about why we picked a different spot. Their lease is up with Navos. And so they're actually, Southwest Youth and Family Services is actually moving the programming specifically for the families at Alcoves up into the White Center Hub location that's opening here, I believe, at the end of October. They are still very much committed to serving these families and still very much committed to the relationships they have built, the youth that they're serving, the parents they're supporting. They're, this is not an easy decision that they have made, or us. We are working to stay in compliance with our CDBG requirements by funding the same programming, the same staff, keeping these same staff here in the Burian area, working with Burian families at the Woodridge and Arbor Heights apartment complexes. And we are also working very closely with Southwest Youth and Family Services to make sure that they are still supporting the families at Alcoves, even though they are physically no longer able to sustain their programming onsite at the Alcoves Apartments.
So what would that look like? Because, you know, when you're saying, is that going to be case management going to the Alcove Apartments? Because, you know, we have other organizations, and I just, you know, before we used to get a report of who applied and how that money was broken out, you know, and then you'd see whether it's Paralomino's, or Latino Civil Alliance, or Alimentando al Pueblo, or, you know, some of the other organizations that are, but I'm just, you know, trying, because I know where that facility is at. And, you know, and we haven't had any gang violence in that area, right? Like, I haven't, you know, I haven't seen the murders that have happened. Those murders have happened here when the kids are coming out of, out of high school and walking, you know, right here in this, this road. So, so I was, you know, I just wanted to see and hear, how's the program going to be operating? Because, you know, is it, it's going to be operating remotely. So I just heard the White Center, and then I heard the apartment complexes.
Sure. Yeah, this is still something that Southwest Youth and Family Services is figuring out. We're happy to still continue to bring that information to you all. We also have heard directly from them about their partnerships with schools. They're looking to utilize every avenue possible to make sure that they are keeping up with the relationships they have built with these families, whether that's meeting kids after schools, looking for additional places here in Burian to meet with families. I know they've met with myself and Sarah. They've met with Lorraine in our Economic Development Department to quite literally suss out every option, but nothing has finalized at this time. They are still very committed. This is still very much an active conversation. And regarding the area, Southwest Youth and Family Services obviously was onsite, and that's, was onsite, and that's an incredible investment to be able to make into a community and into an area. And there are additional services looking to help address youth violence concerns in the area. This is a, an effort being made by the city and also by our partners at King County Regional Office of Gun Violence Prevention and in partnership with the Burian Police Department. Folks are very much in communication about where providers need to be, how we can be working and collaborating together. So while we are disappointed at the loss of having Southwest Youth and Family Services onsite and the services onsite at the Alcoves, this is not a, a lost area, if that makes sense. We are still working on ways to wrap services around creatively to make sure partners are invested and still be able to utilize the Community Development Block Grant dollars in our entitlement for our residents and for the programming throughout the community that is still supporting the family and advocacy and education needs of our students and our families.
Any, any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Motta.
Here thing, I, I'm gonna vote for this tonight, but I don't vote on this vote very, very happily. I don't feel like it's been thought through because you said that they're going to be, and I do want to hear what, what it's going to look like, because money's getting hard to find. We've had, you know, several newspaper articles on situations, on the way that money's being handled now. I support this organization. I remember they're the first ones that stepped up at Alcove Apartments. So I'm good with that. But to me, I just don't see how it's going to function. And like I said, without having the notes of what the executive or the committee or the commissioner went through, I have, I have some concerns that we're still going to hear how this program, but I got to tell you that I know that the investment they made at New Futures and the facility that they no longer have, they made more than what we gave them to be able to make that happen. So this was good faith effort in making sure that it's not money that's not going to stay within the community. So that's it. I'd like to say that. Thank you.
I guess I just want to kind of second that, because if it's Burian's Community Development Block Grant, I understand, I hear what you're saying about partnerships and sort of the trickle-down effects and working with our partners to figure out how to, how to also help the program that isn't going to be there anymore at the Alcoves. But these, but these apartment, these apartments are not in Burian, right? I mean, these are White Center, aren't they?
These are both in Burian.
They both are.
King County Housing Authority.
Okay, okay. Well, then I'm less concerned. But I thought for, I thought for a second that these were in White Center, and that, and that was, I was concerned that it wasn't going to be in jurisdictional boundary of Burian. But if they are in Burian, that's okay. Less concerned. Okay, well, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to our second agenda item, the 2026 Comp Plan Amendment Process Follow-up. Liz and Chaney.
Oh, sorry. How do I, there we go. Got it. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us back again to discuss the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Follow-Up and also to discuss the City Initiated Docket that we're proposing. We are back here from a request at the last council meeting to come back and provide more details about the process and schedule for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Process. So we are also going to share a list tonight of those initiate, draft list of the city-initiated comprehensive plan amendments. Sorry. As you all recall, we just completed the Comprehensive Plan Amendment in October of 2024. And That's a periodic update. Periodic update, sorry. The periodic update to the Comprehensive Plan. Burian is a city that is fully planning under the Growth Management Act. And we do have a legal framework that guides our process for those periodic updates and also for annual updates. So we'll talk a little bit about what that framework provides in terms of scheduling and how this is done as we move through this presentation. So we did just complete that periodic update, and that was a two-year process with a lot of public engagement. I know that we sat with you many, many times, and also with the Planning Commission, as we went through the process. In October of 2024, we did adopt Ordinance 847, and that was the periodic update that established values, visions, and a land use plan to guide our growth. This was informed by many different items. One was the Growth Management Act that I mentioned, also Vision 2050, and the King County Countywide Planning Policies. So it was an overarching look at all of these different things. It was a very high-level view of both land use and density. The land use map that was a part of the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update was eventually needs to be translated into zoning. That started in the, right shortly after the council adopted the periodic update. At the end of the year in December, council adopted zoning designations for multifamily and commercial properties, and those were enacted and made available beginning of this year. Then the council turned their looksee to the residentially zoned properties, and that was the middle housing work that was done in June of this year. So we went from the land use designation on the left-hand side, which is the map with just a few colors, and then we translate it into the zoning designations on the right, which you can see are much more granular. And they start to actually explain what can you do on a piece of property. The land use map, again, is more general. We think of it as almost a funnel. You start a land use map, you're looking across the whole city, translate it into the zoning designations that tell you what you can do on an individual piece of property. There is a process that I mentioned to update the Comprehensive Plan. There are two ways you can do that. You can have a privately initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and anybody in Burian that is a property owner that wanted to think about amending the comp plan can do so. And that would be for a land use map. You can also initiate it by the city. So the city ourselves, we can also initiate complant amendments. So this happens once a year, and this is part of that framework, that legal framework that I was talking about. The state has declared that we do the updates once a year, and it's very, very specific. And part of that reason is so that we can actually look cumulatively at all of the questions and all that's coming up so that we can look at it as a group. So we are not doing a one-off here, there, and everything, and not ever looking at what's the cumulative impact of changes. And so this would be our opportunity. So we'll go ahead and there's a series of steps, and those are outlined in both the Growth Management Act and also the Burian Municipal Code. So I'm going to go ahead and talk through what our schedule is to update the Comp Plan Amendment for this annual update. As I mentioned, there are two potential ways to update, either a privately initiated or a city-initiated. For a privately initiated, there is a deadline of October 1st to have a pre-application meeting. This pre-application This pre-application meeting is an opportunity for staff to help coach applicants to make sure that they have the proper materials and that they're on track to make a good, solid application. Applications are due in November 3rd. Once the applications are due, the city-initiated proposals and any privately initiated proposals really become a part of one group of options. There is no heavier weighting for a city-initiated proposal or a privately initiated proposal. The next time that these become public per se is at the December 10th Planning Commission Meeting. That will be a public meeting. We'll have conversation about what should be on the docket to move further for review. And Planning Commission will then make a recommendation at that meeting that will come to the City Council on January 12th. On January 12th, the council will finalize the docket of which amendments we will be moving forward throughout the year to analyze and study. And in the second quarter of 2026, the Planning Commission will again take those, the docket. They'll have a public hearing and they will also recommend at that time again to the City Council, which ones should we move forward potentially toward adoption? Q3 of 2026, we look, the council will adopt an ordinance which will amend the Comprehensive Plan with whichever whichever proposals have made the cut. There are a lot of criteria for what can be approved. And so once we've done all that analysis, then the council will determine which ones they want to move forward that time and actually amend for the comp plan. So Chaney's gonna talk a little bit about those items that we have on the city-initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And I will just note, to date, we have not received any privately initiated applications, nor have we received requests for a pre-application meeting. Chaney?
Hi, good evening, City Council. Chaney Skatson, Senior Planner. As Liz went over, the, the in Burien City Initiated Amendments are brought forward when staff identify the need to address updates, whether they're state mandates or implementing adopted plans or policies or to respond to emerging community priorities. Each proposal goes through the docketing process like a city or like a public or private initiated amendment would. Planning Commission Review, the SEPA Environmental Review, and public participation before the consideration by the City Council. I'm going to go through this list of what we have been tracking as needing some minor refinements from the 2020 or 2044 Comprehensive Plan that we adopted last year. So when we adopted the Comprehensive Plan, it went through a lot of review before it was adopted. We gave notice to the Department of Commerce. We gave notice to the Department of Ecology. We gave notice to King County and to the Puget Sound Regional Council to get a review so they could provide comments on our draft. And then once we adopted our Comprehensive Plan, we gave notice again and said, and here's the draft that we adopted. And in some cases, we got comments during the draft review that said, hey, I think you need to focus more on this, or you missed this, or good job, we see that you've accomplished these things that were, are required for these reasons. One comment we got was on the housing chapter and it's pertaining to needing to do a capacity analysis. So as part of the comp plan, we have our housing targets and our job targets and we needed to conduct land capacity analysis for emergency housing need. But at the time that we were preparing our Comprehensive Plan and the, the time we were adopting the Comprehensive Plan, we had not yet adopted the STEP housing regulations. Remember those? So emergency housing is one of those housing types and we didn't have the provisions, the development regulations adopted yet to kind of test our land capacity analysis. We did it as part of adopting the STEP housing code on December 13th with the Ordinance 850. But that, like a table documenting that, demonstrating that capacity analysis isn't in the Comprehensive Plan. So we got a comment saying, hey, we know you did it as part of your development regulations, but we'd really like to see that in your Comprehensive Plan. So if that's something in the housing chapter, we're gonna add is include the, the capacity analysis for emergency housing. Another item is to refine the land use chapter. So our, right now, our land use chapter Comprehensive Plan map follows parcel boundaries, which we'd like to update that methodology and go to the center line of the, of the streets so that the right of ways and tracks and other kind of one-off areas have a Comprehensive Plan land use designation and they follow kind of a geometry instead of like a parcel specific. It's better practice and something that we're already working with our GIS team on, on updating. So it makes for a cleaner review of the Comprehensive Plan map when it covers the right of way and less room for errors. As well as Liz went over, or Community Development Director Liz went over some of the rezoning we've done. There's another rezone we're about to start, the north of Nera Rezone. And that's to align the Comprehensive Plan Map and the future zoning map. And as you may recall, in the Comprehensive Plan, we have the implementing zones for each land use designation. Well, we're developing a new proposal for some rezoning north of Nera and we're gonna need that table in the Comprehensive Plan to name the future zone. So we'll come back around the same time that we have the recommended zoning for that area. So it could be added to the comp plan and they will be consistent and aligned. There's also some minor updates to the sustainability and, oh no, I'm sorry. We'll start with the Capital Facilities and Transportation Master Program. The Public Works Department is working on the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, I think it's called. And if there are projects identified there that they want to seek funding for, it needs to be on our CIP. So we want to make sure that we're getting all these projects that have been identified and want to be, you know, completing in the right places. And then as part of the Critical Areas Ordinance update, we've been reviewing our consistency between the Comprehensive Plan and the development regulations because the Comprehensive Plan is a policy document directing, whereas the development regulations in the zoning map are the legal, not framework, but the, I wrote it down, the regulatory piece. And when we were looking closer at some of the goals and policies in the Sustainability and Natural Environment Chapter, they were a little too specific. They kind of outlined the entire citation of the RCW or the WAC when in reality it was too prescriptive and should have provided a little more direction and less prescription. So we want to clean that up a little. It's not substantively a big change, but it just makes it a cleaner kind of chapter. And there's miscellaneous changes. So as part of updating the Comprehensive Plan, we amended our urban center boundary, which is great, which means that there's more areas in the city that we can apply for grants and projects and have a competitive application. But we want to make sure that that boundary is reflected on all the maps correctly and then in the, throughout the chapter. Like for example, this is really important in the land use chapter and it's correct there, but in the Economic Development Chapter, there is the outdated urban center boundary. So we want to make sure that that's updated. There's other kind of scrivener things that we want to just make sure that they're cross-chapter consistency. But those, those miscellaneous items aren't very substantive. They're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of let you know, those are the things that we currently are proposing for the city-initiated. Again, they still need to go through the docketing process and determine if they fit all of the criteria and if the council, you know, wants us to move forward on those. But those are high-level summary of some of the city-initiated items to date. And so we await a direction that the council may have. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Mora.
An 11-page document was outlining the areas that were designated land use and zoned and properly was sent to every council of, or every member of council. The author was clear about exactly what does not comply and what needs to be removed and for commercial land use and downzone these specific parcels. The communities of Three Tree Point and Lake Burien have worked hard and consistently to bring this to our attention and I do think it's time that we listened. So with that, I do have a motion. I move to add this following, sorry, could the clerk add? I did send it to her. That way the council knows what I'm reading off. I move to add the following to the docket of proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments and to direct staff to review and prepare proposed amendments to the land use and zoning sections for council consideration and approval. Three Tree Point Amendment, revise the land use map and designate the, all our L2 properties within Three Tree Point to RL1 in order to allow an area-wide rezone from R3 to R1 and designate all commercial mixed-use designated properties within Three Tree Point to RL1, or also known as R1, and other facilities and facilitate an area-wide rezone from MU1 to R1. For Lake Burien Amendment, revise the land use map and redesignate all RL2 properties adjacent to Lake Burien to RL1 in order to allow an area-wide rezone from R3 to R1, excluding the Ruth Dykman Center property. For Seahurst Amendment, revise the land use map and redesignate the Seahurst neighborhood from R3 and R2 to R1 in order to allow an area-wide rezone. And additionally, staff shall review and correct any areas that were erroneously zoned without the required application of SMP and critical areas, regulations, and restrictions that are inconsistent with these regulations, including but not limited to Three Tree Point, Lake Burien.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Are there further comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Reiki.
I'm sorry, do you want to speak to it?
No, I spoke before.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Reiki.
First of all, I, I want to recognize and thank city staff for all of the work that you've been doing to respond and to and to share information with city council and to put all of this together. I, I respect the work that you've been doing and I greatly appreciate it. And on top of that, I want to thank the community for all of the work that you've been doing to share your thoughts and concerns throughout the comp plan process last year and up to today. I understand and realize that it can be frustrating. It can be concerning. It can be scary. And at the same time, it can, this is your community and you have a right to raise these concerns and to share them. And I'm greatly appreciative to the community for taking those efforts to do that. In my, in my view, a lot of the zoning didn't make sense to me in the areas with with shoreline restrictions and tree canopy restrictions and busing and all of that. It felt to me as if it was being overzoned. And we are a tier-two city without an expectation of becoming a tier-one city anywhere in the next 10 to 20 years. And I just felt that we didn't need to overzone certain areas where we wouldn't be able to do that. So I support making these downzoning recommendations and to align them better with shoreline master plans, critical area plans and things like that so that it all kind of makes sense when people come forward to make their applications. I understand the difference. I really do. I understand the difference between comp plan, zoning, and permitting. Myself, I get it. I totally do. My husband's in construction. I've talked to him. I, I understand. And I think it's been somewhat confusing for the community. And so I think that these changes will assist in helping to make it less confusing and more understandable as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just want to add first thanks to folks in the community who kept at it and started in the summer and invited all of us to come speak to you at some of the biggest community gatherings I've ever been to in Burien. You're all just a bunch of neighbors who got together and said, we want to change something. And so I appreciate your, your fortitude in that. I want to also appreciate the, the staff for going along with us and figuring it out as we go along and figure out what works and what's legal and what's allowed. And it's, it's certainly not been a, it's certainly not been the easiest of processes, but we've learned a lot from this and I think moving forward, it'll be, it'll be better for, I guess, the next 10, in 10 years from now. And also for the council for going and meeting with folks and asking questions and being really eager to, to figure out what can happen. Do you have something you wanted to add, State Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask council to take a brief recess, we want to make sure that council gets what it wants in terms of the proper motion made. And our legal counsel has asked us to take a brief recess so that we could help to craft a properly worded motion for what council just made and potentially consider.
Okay, five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. Councilmember Ake, do you have amendments?
Yeah, I would like to propose an amendment to add the following statement. I move to submit a city-initiated application for consideration on the 2026 comprehensive plan amendment docket for the following items. I'd like that to be in front of the entire proposal. Can I have a second?
Councilmember Mora?
Second.
Okay, is that, okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna vote on that amendment first. So all those in favor of that amendment, so it excludes, it changes that first part and then changes it to direct staff to move, to submit a city-initiated application for consideration on the 2026 comp plan amendment docket for the following items. So all those in favor of that language change, please raise your hand or say aye. Okay, that is 1, 2, 3, that is councilmembers Mora, Andrade, Mata, Mayor Schilling, Deputy Mayor Moore, Councilmember Ake, and Councilmember Garcia. So that was a unanimous amendment change there. So we'll move to our main motion, which is all of this. So I'll read the main motion. So it is to direct staff to submit a city-initiated application for consideration on the 2026 comprehensive plan amendment docket for the following items, then these three items, Three Tree Point Amendment, Lake Burien Amendment, Seahurst Amendment, with additional consideration around SMP and critical area regulation and restrictions. So any other comments? All right, well, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Those in favor, Councilmember Mora, Councilmember Andrade, Councilmember Mata, myself, Mayor Schilling, and Councilmember Ake. So that passes 5 to 2.
Did you want to ask?
The mayor.
Sorry, all those opposed. Council, Deputy Mayor Moore and Councilmember Garcia. So that passes 5 to 2, 5 in favor to opposed. Thank you all very much. So we'll move to our city council planning calendar for if there are any items that folks have. Councilmember Andrade?
Thank you. I have already had an initial conversation with the city manager in regards to this. What we heard earlier, Councilmember Mata had stated that we have a lot of these unfood, unpermitted food vendors that are just growing in number instead of going back. So he said something that really stuck with me. He says, we don't regulate the health department, but what we do regulate is our Burien municipal code, so are our laws. And so I think that that's where we need to start. So I wanted to see if I had support to work with the city staff on updating our nuisance ordinance and, and going from there.
So nuisance ordinance update, you've spoken with Adolph, the city manager, about this and other folks? Okay, thumbs up for support for looking at our nuisance ordinances. All right, there's a bunch of thumbs up there.
I'd like to make an amendment possible if we could also include a discussion on a nuisance ordinance to incorporate residential properties that have been abandoned or have been damaged in fires and are lacking.
It's, it's something that's a general nuisance, yeah.
Is calling out specifically certain items, and that's one of them.
Perfect, thanks.
It looks like you got every thumb up for that. Any other items? Deputy Mayor Moore?
This, this may be a last-ditch effort, but I would love for city staff to bring back any, any, any conversation about what Burien could do regarding the trees at Mathis and Park.
Is there a thumbs up for city staff to explore figuring out what to do there? Thumbs up for me, thumbs up for me? Okay, there's thumbs up across the board there, too.
I think it's, yes, we could certainly do that, Mayor, but I'm not sure of the specific request, if the deputy mayor could elaborate, is it to, a general plan for tree maintenance? I just don't understand that.
I, I think it would be understanding kind of the relationship between the Port of Seattle and Burien vis a vis the tree removal, and what, what the steps are that, who initiates, what happens next? What, what, if anything, can the city of Burien do to, kind of, to influence the decision on this, to remove them?
Would, just to derive a clarity, I think what I'm understanding is just a, a process for how the tree removal process works. Like, you know, if someone identifies a tree, how they go about communicating that information? Is that helpful?
In the, in the airport committee meeting, we discussed the relationship between the port's decision and the tree code, and how the, how the tree code is exercised by the port and the city and in the removal of the trees. And I, I think a council briefing on that would be helpful.
Isn't this already a done deal? Like, hasn't the port already decided, like, they went through the public hearing and everything, and that ended? Is this a done deal or not?
That's, that's what I would like to have, have updates to understand better.
If I may, Mayor, if it's helpful, if, if council would authorize the deputy mayor to, to work with us, and then we could create a process for bringing information to the council.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
That's, that's more what I'm looking for anyway.
You just did so that, is there support?
Yeah, you got the thumbs up for that.
Okay.
There was thumbs up for that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other items? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned at 8:22.